To the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great, so then I don't need to worry about sharing the screen because sometimes that's where things go wrong. It says here approval of minutes of January, but we actually, did we do that?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, all right, so let's ask for approval of the minutes from the January meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes.
I'll second everybody.
Thank you, I have the motion and the second, all in favor?
Who's second, everybody was together.
I am.
Could, could we clarify that that was Dan that motioned?
Uh, Dan, and then I believe it was Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, can we do the financial report?
Yeah, the January financial report is incorrect, so we will not be approving it today. The accountant included the Danville Architectural Historic Board salary and approved fees in the Planning Commission's financials for January erroneously. So those will be restated and we'll be approving the January financial report at the March meeting.
Okay, all right, that takes care of that, then, construction sureties.
Yeah, I don't have any updates on this, I can go through what we've got if you want, but no new sureties for this month.
Okay.
If there's no changes, we don't need to take action.
Yes, no action.
That's correct, no action.
I would, I would say that was correct. Okay, so rolling right along, subdivision approvals?
Yep, so I've got it up on your screen, but William C. Hunley has applied for the subdivision to create a 36.379 acre tract of land located on Dry Fork Road, Boyle County. The property is zoned AG agricultural. The reason that this property is coming through the planning commission is because the parent tract has been subdivided in the past five years, which meets our threshold for quote unquote a major subdivision plat that's required to go through planning commission. But if you look at the plat, it's meeting our front edge requirements, it's meeting our minimum lot size requirements. I, I don't really have too much to add on this unless you all have any questions for me. And Colton is on the call to represent the client on this.
Any comments from, uh, Colton? No, there's none. Any questions or comments from the commissioner?
No, I would make a motion that we approve William C.'s subdivision tract on Dry Fork Road.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, good deal, I'm sorry you had to wait a little bit longer for this, but it is taken care of.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you all.
Thanks, Colton.
Bye bye. Michaela, do we have anything else in regards to subdivision, or can we move down to new business?
We can move to new business.
Okay, advisory committee reports?
Um, I believe the advisory committee did not meet in between the January and February meetings.
I didn't recall that we had.
We, yeah, we have had some conversations about some changes that we were working on. I was going to bring one of them forward on the subdivision regulations, but obviously with this not being able to hold a public hearing at this meeting, that'll get postponed until the March meeting. Everything else is kind of still on hold, there's been some additional conversations about some of the ordinance amendments and things that we are looking at. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much the whole update.
Michaela, just to add, since that's coming to the March meeting, is, is that straightforward enough that we can proceed without you?
I would think so, but, you know, as we're going to talk about later about the BG ad contracts, I can make sure that if we do proceed with the BG ad, I will have their planner up to date on, on it so that they can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Okay, Terry, how about the budget committee report?
Yeah, you know, Sam and I met with Michaela to look at both the fiscal year 25 budget amendment one and the fiscal year 26 preliminary budget. And I think Michaela's going to go over, you know, 10,000 foot view of those two documents.
Yep, and I was going to try and have them up on the screen, but I, let me see if I can sign in quickly. Do you all have it in front of you or no?
No, we still have the subdivision plan.
Okay.
That's up on the screen, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh goodness, this is going to be interesting to see if I remember my password here. Bear with me while I take a few attempts.
It's not password, it's cranky.
Yep, it's not looking good right now. Oh boy, okay, let me see if I've got it in my phone.
Does everyone have a paper here now?
Goodness.
Oh, yesterday, on Monday, on Monday?
I have a copy.
Yeah, I'll never with me.
I have it.
Do you, can you share your paper?
Well, that's way beyond my finger.
Um, I've got it, I'm trying to get it up on the screen.
Now, if you look over my shoulder, you can, I can share.
All right.
All right. I can hold it up to the camera.
We might almost.
I'm requesting to share mine, if you can authorize me, I can show it.
Oh, hang on, Henry, I might have it. If this doesn't work right now, then I will let you do that, if I can figure out how to authorize other people. I didn't know you were locked out, but, okay. Sorry, that was fun for everyone, I apologize. Oh boy. What's that? Yeah. All right. I thought I was being responsible downloading them all beforehand, but I didn't think about this. There's my mouse. Okay. All right, um, planning commission. Okay, there we go. Oh, this is the prelim, let me get up the budget amendment.
You need to share your screen again, Michaela, we're still seeing the plat, the subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not seeing my other budget, hang on. Henry, do you want to try and share yours? Yes.
Here goes.
Okay, see if that works.
Is, is that my one?
There we go, yay.
Oh, well, that's the financial report, right?
So is it in the digital packet, or?
Um, no, it came out after.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Be nice then, sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Good try.
Good try. Let me see.
No, I only have a paper copy too, until I have this paper copy.
Okay, um, hang on, I'm downloading it now, I think I should be able to get it up here. Then let me share my screen again.
In situations like this, we always have to just breathe in and out for the moment, and it will eventually show up on the screen.
That's right.
We should all, we should all keep a grandchild next to us.
Yep, that's a good idea. Okay, I think I've got it, are you all seeing FY 25 budget amendment one?
I am.
Excellent, all right. Thank you all for bearing with me here. Okay, so I'm not, I don't want to go through this line by line, but the first point to note is that we got the number from our, basically our carryover from the previous fiscal year as $18,128. So previously, we had projected $118,000, so this is the number that we pulled from our audit, so our budget amendment one is reflecting that accurately. Some of the major changes in revenue, we are getting a little bit more from the county. They've stopped having us apply for funding, they're just, you know, putting us through their cycle automatically, and they've been giving us kind of some small bumps from what we, we've seen in the past, so that's why that number's up a little bit. Our construction review fees, as Terry discusses every month when he goes through financial reports, are up significantly. We had projected $2,500 and we're at $43,000, so that's kind of the big change in our revenue here. So I won't run through the rest, I kind of tweak the numbers back and forth a little bit, just depending on how our applications have come in, those are obviously hard to predict as we go through the year. But we were showing in our budget final for FY 25 of $194,000, and in this budget amendment one, we're at $223,000, so obviously a bigger increase in revenue than what we were originally projecting from the final amendment that we approved, I don't know, sometime in May, June of 2024. Salaries, I got that small 6% bump back in end of August, I believe, so that's why you see the slight increase from the budget final to this new amendment. We pretty much left that the same, obviously, we're not going to be paying a director going forward in, you know, March 20th, until we find a replacement, but we talked it through with the budget committee and we felt it was appropriate to leave it in. That way, you know, when we get a new person in, we're covered. And also, like I said, we're going to kind of talk about the Bluegrass Area Development District potentially stepping in, and the fees that we would be paying for planning services through that, if we choose to go forward with that, would basically be a wash with what we'd be paying for salary with the planning director, so I think that should be fairly accurately reflected. Is there any questions for me on that before I keep moving on?
No, move on.
Okay. For this one, not much has changed, our, we had to buy two new computers that I was not anticipating in the budget final, so that amount went up slightly, I had to spend a little extra money on GIS software and things like that as part of the comprehensive plan that I wasn't anticipating, so that number just went up slightly from what we were showing in the budget final. Contract services, not, um, sorry, it's a little hard for me to read these numbers here, but it looks like just about a thousand dollar difference, and I think that was mainly due to, the DOE lease service. Lisa and I've had some printer issues over the past six months, so we've had DOE have to come out a little bit more than we were expecting, so that's pretty much the change for that. This has stayed the same for non-local travel expenses, it's pretty much my allowance for attending conferences I negotiated when I first started, and we're leaving that in in case you want to be able to provide that same flexibility to the new director when you bring them in. The comp plan, I bumped that up slightly, we're, we're kind of over, we're at about $3,800 now. And so, you know, I bumped that up to accommodate for that. And then for miscellaneous, miscellaneous expenses, we added $10,000 in, so this is pretty much recruitment expenses for director search, so that will include job postings that I've put up, anytime you need to fly somebody in, or if you need to pay relocation expenses, or a hotel for the night, or, you know, what have you, we've got some money budgeted for that, that obviously we didn't anticipate in the budget final. So, that's really it, so, you know, our total expenditures, we were projecting at $226,000, I believe. If I'm reading those wrong, I'm sorry, my eyesight's not the best, I'm a little far away from this. And for the amendment one, we're showing at about $244,000. So again, mostly due to the recruitment expenses, some of the comp plan, computer software, those types of things. But is there any questions for me on that?
So, Michaela, on the, I got the expenses, director search, hiring BG ADD for interim work, is that covered in contractual services?
We did not do a separate line item for it because it's going to be very hard to predict what that amount is going to look like, and we didn't want to double dip, basically showing, you know, I think, sorry, I didn't bring that number with me, but I think I calculated it out, it's going to be about $25,000 in savings for the director's salary plus fringe, you know, like retirement, things like that, for the remainder of the year. And then I think it would be about that same amount if you were to pay for 20 hours per week of contractual services from the BG ad, which might be more than you need, but, you know, I was just trying to be conservative with it, and that came out to be about $25,000, give or take. And so, it's kind of a wash, we didn't want to put an extra $25,000 in there, double dipping, because, you know, you might need those services for two weeks, you might need them for two months, it's really hard to predict, we just don't know.
I just, for, for, maybe it's Terry's question to say, all right, that's one line, and we offset it.
Yeah, it's personnel budget.
But do we need another line item to show it, or are we okay?
I don't, I don't think so, at this time.
Okay, thanks.
You know, when we do a final, you know, a budget for 2025 and show our final forecast for 2024, hopefully by then we're going to know, we'll have a new director. And then we can, then we can if we want, you know, put the actual numbers in, but as Michaela says, it's basically a wash. When we save it for salary, we'll pay for the Bluegrass side of personnel.
Yep.
Yep. So, okay, that is FY 25 budget amendment one, if we could take a vote on that, and then I'll go over the FY 26 prelim budget.
I can't see it on this, but what do we end up with as a, you know, a final balance of $87,000?
Yep, about $87,000, so again, we were at $108,000 at the end of the last fiscal year for carryover, and we're projecting at about $87,000 for, for this, which is pretty much the same, it looks like, as our budget, as our final budget. So even though we're adding those expenditures in with the director search and salary bumps and such things, you know, with our revenue being increased, we, it's pretty much a wash, so, yeah. Okay, I'll let you all take a vote while I do this.
So I guess we need a motion to approve this amendment number one, is that correct?
Yep.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Rita.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dan, all those in favor, please say yes or raise your hand.
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, what's the next thing, Dave?
All right, this is the FY 26 preliminary budget, so we're looking forward to the next fiscal year, which would start on July 1, 2025. So I'll try and run through this one pretty quickly. I kind of, you know, changed around some of the numbers for the revenue, but I pretty much kept it pretty similar. For our FY 25 budget final, we are showing at $194,000, approximately, and I'm around the same amount for our FY 26 prelim budget. So, sorry, I didn't say this on the top, but our FY 26 prelim budget is going to be the, the most right-hand column here, and our FY 25 budget final and budget amendment one are the two columns that you see to the left of it. And so the FY 25 budget amendment one is what we just approved there. For salary, I, you know, it's so hard with the prelim budget to know what we're going to do for COLA bumps and things like that, so I just showed a 1.5% bump, but we usually just try and emulate what the, the county does, and I usually look at, to see what the state does, so I just kind of put in a placeholder number there for now, obviously with the assumption that there would be a new director in place, or I guess if you're still paying the ad, that should cover it as well. For total office, it's pretty similar, I think I decreased the amount just slightly by about $1,000, because hopefully, knock on wood, we will not have to buy two new computers again for this upcoming fiscal year, so I, I kind of brought that back down from what we had it before. For local travel expense, so this is just kind of our fuel and vehicle maintenance, I kept it the same as the previous budget year. For contractor services, I, you know, I, for one thing, we are going to need to put out a new RFP for our FY 25 audit. This was the last year, I think we signed a three-year contract with Kerbal Roads and Butler, and this was our last year that was covered, so we will need to put out a new RFP. This number might be higher, we've been, they've been bumping up about 300 each year, so that's what I showed here, but speaking to other planners, I've had to go out and do RFPs for this, you know, it, I don't, I don't know what this cost is going to look like, it's hard to predict. The rest I kept pretty similar, I might have shown slight bumps in like insurance and things like that, just, you know, natural inflation of things, so nothing major, but is there any questions for me on this one? No, all right. Again, I kept the 740 in for conference allowance, which was agreed upon by me, but it sounds like if you want to be able to offer that same service to the next director, it's in the budget if you choose to do so. I brought down the planning commission expense, previous years, we had that at zero. I had added some in for the comprehensive plan, hopefully that will not be carrying over to the next fiscal year, and that, that can go back down to zero. And then I, you know, the $10,000 that we put in for recruitment expenses in the budget amendment one, I brought that back down to zero, again with the assumption that hopefully we will not be recruiting in the next fiscal year, so. That's pretty much it, is there any questions for me on that? Again, we're showing, so our carryover from the FI, from this current fiscal year, we're projected to be about $87,000 for next fiscal year, we're at about, I think, is that $59,000? $50,000? Sorry, I can't, I can't read that.
It's 50.
Thank you.
$50,082.
Yep, so $50,000. We, we tend to come out a little higher than, you know, because I, I tend to be pretty conservative on the, the revenue and our expenditures, sometimes we don't always spend out to, to what we're budgeting for, so hopefully that will end up being higher when it's all said and done, but pretty much as Terry always explains, if that number goes below $40,000, once we're projecting, we would start asking for an increase from the city and county to cover the increasing expenses, so. That, that's all I've got, if you all wouldn't mind taking a vote on that one as well, unless you've got questions for me.
Do we have any questions on the? Do we have any questions on the pre, or preliminary budget?
I think it looks good. Yep, no issues.
Okay. So does anybody want to make a motion for approval?
Someone.
Okay. It looked like I had a motion and a second there.
There you go.
So all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Okay, great. Do you have anything else under budget then?
I, I don't, unless Terry's got anything else to add. But that's really all we talked about. Okay.
And first, then we'll go to Personnel Committee.
Yep. Do you want me to talk about this, or do you want to talk about it, Sally?
I'm, I'm happy for you to discuss it if you'd like.
Okay.
If you feel confident about it.
Yep. So the Personnel Committee met, obviously, to discuss my resignation and the transition that we're, we're going to be undergoing. So we talked about the job posting and the formation of a recruitment committee. I think I'll let Sally talk a little bit more about the recruitment committee, but my, yeah.
Michaela, do you mind taking down your screen?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry.
It makes everybody's picture real.
Yep.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you. So we do need to develop a recruitment committee. Previously, when we had the recruitment committee, if I'm not in error, I believe Steve was on it with me. I believe that Tom Ruby was on it. And our previous chair was on it, as well as Jim.
Right.
Is that right, Steve?
That's correct. I think it's correct.
And I'm happy to step off of that while we're doing this, other transitions going on. Or if you want me to go ahead and stay on it, that's fine. Let's talk about who we think we need to have on it, okay?
Yeah, I, I'd like to keep you on there. I think you're a valued resource on there. Last time especially, I think you were. I'd like to keep you on there.
Thanks, Steve.
I guess, since there's anybody else who would like to join that group, that'll go.
I'm willing, Steve, if you feel like you need another, you know, additional person. Part of it is, you guys all have the experience of having gone through it once. I do not, so.
Well, we don't know for sure about Jim, you know. With Jim possibly being able to come back, but I'm not sure, then we'll be, we won't have him, and we won't have our, our previous chair from him. So we'll have a lesser number.
Yeah. I think, I think Danny.
I would welcome that, if not myself.
All right. Put my, I named one.
So we'll try to get together as quickly as we can. First thing, of course, is to do the ad to see if we can get some candidates.
I am, sorry, I can give an update on that. I did post the ad on the APA website, and I sent out an email to get on the APA Kentucky website. I wanted to talk one more time about the LinkedIn. And indeed, it sounds like we could get overwhelmed with candidates, and we're having everyone email Henry. So I just wanted to toss that out one last time before I went ahead and pulled the trigger on that. But if everyone's comfortable with me doing it, I can post it on those other two websites as well. But I think a lot of planners do look at the APA website as their resource. But, you know, I wouldn't want to not cast a wide enough net that we're missing people. But it's a give and take. I don't know.
Henry, do you have any comments about that?
I think there are a couple of job openings around central Kentucky, and we, it behooves us to cast a wide net. I have the staff to help me sort through if there's a huge volume.
Okay. Okay, great. I will get those up this afternoon.
So in the meantime, I'll try to schedule a time for us to just have a discussion about qualifications that we're looking for. And, you know, we've had a wonderful experience with Michaela, but not quite long enough experience with Michaela. And so, you know, we need to talk a little bit about incoming candidates, what, what characteristics we might be looking for this time around. So I'll try to get a group together, you know, our group together, just to talk about that.
And you, we also have a job description that we, we post?
Yeah.
We do, yeah.
We should have that in front of us as well.
Yep, I can get that out to you all.
Sure. Of course, ideally, someone from the region who knows something about our area. It, that was part of what we were looking at the last time. But, and, and in fact, we had a candidate who was from quite a ways away. So there, that, that would be, have been a long move. And we, we really liked Michaela's characteristics, her background, and the fact that she had some knowledge of the area. So. So anyway, I will, I will gather us together. I'll send out a little poll, see if we can get together soon, okay?
That's good.
And then, once we get some candidates, then we'll begin looking at them.
Now, Michaela, what's your last day?
It's March twentieth, Thursday, March twentieth. So we have a little bit of time before I'm, I'm gone. So, you know, anything that you all need or think of that you need for the transition, now's a great time to tell me so I can get it done. My schedule is, you know, quickly piling up. So, but I just want to make sure that we've got every, everything in place that you all need for this. So.
Okay. So I think we'll probably then move into other, other, other mixings?
Yep.
Go ahead, Michaela.
I might have Henry help me a little bit with this section. But essentially, we're looking to authorize commissioners for administrative tasks. So everything that I signed off on currently, I think we just basically need to authorize or deputize some of the commissioners for those tasks. It sounds like previously, we had Terry do a lot of the financial stuff. So he would kind of bring checks to the bank, and we have to have two people sign off on checks. I think right now, we've got Jim, Sally, and Terry as basically authorized to sign things with the bank. I sign off on timesheets. I sign off on Platts and plans. I can't, those are all I can think of right now, Henry. I don't know if we need to bring different people in for different tasks, or how we want to, to do that. I don't know if you all recall how you did it the last time around, but.
I went back through the minutes, and I'm, I'm confident we had the chair as a signatory on Platts, which I think is maybe already authorized. And then Mr. Griffin made a motion to add Mr. Mannan as a signee on the farmer's account. And it sounds like that's still in place.
Yeah, we, we just left it.
Is it timesheets then that we need to square away?
Well, last time, last time I signed off on the timesheets too.
Okay.
So Terry, is that, is this onerous? Is this something that you feel like you need to have someone to assist with some of these duties, or?
No, no, you know, not really. As I remember, I had to come in. I don't even think it was necessarily once a week. I know it was at least once every couple of weeks, and sometimes as required. It's just mainly to make sure we've got invoices, you know, going to the accountant, where somebody's got to pick up the checks then that the accounting firm issues. Somebody's got to make a bank deposit. Somebody has to make sure the accounting firm gets us some monthly financial statements. And then the timesheets have to be signed off on. So it's not onerous.
What's our accounting firm, we switch, you know, McDaniel kind of rolled off smaller accounts. So we switched to Bray's Bookkeeping. And they actually come and drop off checks now, so we don't have to pick them up. And we email stuff out instead of dropping it off. So it can kind of run through Terry and Lisa conjointly. And we're going to have a, we're trying to set up a meeting with Bray's Bookkeeping, hopefully on Monday, with Terry, myself, and, and Lisa, which I haven't talked to Lisa about. We're trying to do that for Monday, so we can get that all straightened out. But, yeah, I think it's timesheets. And Henry, I'm not a hundred percent sure that the chair has authorization to sign off on Platts. So we might just want to take a vote on that to be safe, if that's okay with you.
Are you sure? Because I think I'm signing off on one of them.
Well, we, we, for anything that comes through Planning Commission, we have the director and a chair sign off. But for anything minor that comes in, I, I feel like I wrote it up as the director having sign off. So I think we need to authorize the chairman for that. Yeah.
Does it have to be the chairman?
Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
Does it have to be the chairman, or could we authorize Terry to sign Platts, since he's already going to be in the office on occasion?
I would assume somebody else could do Platts.
I, I assume we authorize several people, if possible. That way, you know, I, I don't want it to be onerous for just one person. Because sometimes people put a lot of pressure on us. They've got a closing, and they need it done ASAP. So it's nice to have, you know, a few people that we could call, if that's okay. Henry, I'm not sure, but if possible. You're on mute, sorry.
Like segregation of duties is, is a good thing, and that this might be a good face to put to the community too, about having a couple of different people stepping into the void.
Okay.
Another thing, maybe another person who might sign off on the Platts would be somebody on the technical review committee. Because they'll be looking at the Platts anyway.
Yep.
I, I can support that item at least. And then we always have a rotation of our committee people going on that technical review meeting. So you need, really should have two different parties.
But we're talking.
That group.
We're talking primarily minors, however.
So right now, with our situation that we have, Jim being ill, and we're not exactly sure when he's going to be coming back, I really think, if Sam, are you able to take up some of the slack in signing on, on the Platts?
Yeah, I have a, I have a fairly good schedule that lets me come to that meeting quite often. And I think this, there's only, there's going to be a week or so, if this thing stretches three or four months, that we're, we'll have to switch around. So probably a second would help.
Sorry, I don't know if I'm being.
So if I can, if I can be authorized to sign them, and Sam sign them, then that would, that would take some of that off of Terry. We don't want to add anything more to Terry than what he's taking on right now. I don't think.
Unless you want to include Tom for doing that, Sally, that's, we can talk for Tom. He's not here though. But he could sign those off also.
Well, we, we have Platts that we get, we get preliminary Platts signings at tech review. But then we get minor Platts that come in that probably need to be signed five or six times a month. So.
What we're talking about now is that Terry would take on the financial responsibilities that he has done in the past. And Sam and myself and Tom would be available to sign off on the, the Platts.
Yep, Platts and plans. Yep, zoning permits.
Well, I guess that's my recommendation then. Can I give a second for that recommendation?
Henry, is there any concern over that?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay, so I'd like to make a second to that, to that motion.
Who would do the actual review, Michaela?
So if you don't mind, I would like to just kind of go a little bit out of order of, of the agenda and talk about the, the absence and illness of, of Jim. I don't know when he's going to be returning. And I feel that it would be good to have someone on the interim serving as vice chair until we can have elections. And we'll probably have elections in March. But just in case, you never know what can happen. And it would be good if something should happen to me, if we had Sam able to step in the, into the breach.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do it on the business, especially for this time, timeframe. Go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion.
Sally, do you like?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I get a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Terry. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might confirm, what was that motion, just a temporary vice chairmanship for Mr. Carr? Thank you.
Yeah. We should, we should include that in that the approval statement. Did we, did we not make a final motion to authorize Sam and Tom to do this?
Uh, we, we did. We took care of that.
We didn't vote on it. We didn't vote on it.
We did? We didn't raise our hand? Well, let's do that.
Prove it right now.
Let's roll the dice now.
Okay, let's do that right now.
All right. So for the record, that motion carried.
Thank you.
I think Terry ought to get a salary for all the running he's going to be doing.
I know.
I think you get a motion for that.
But it gets doubled. My salary gets doubled.
I think they should all get a salary.
I mean, that's a, that's a big responsibility, so.
It's not really that important.
All right. I tried.
Okay, so let's talk about the BG ADD contract.
Yep. So this is something that I brought up to the Personnel Committee, and then I brought it to the Budget Committee, and now I'm bringing it to you all. But basically, one of the services that the Bluegrass Area Development District offers is technical planning services. And so in the past, they've kind of stepped in if a community is without a planning director, or if somebody's overloaded or short-staffed, and they need somebody to step in to help with reviews, staff reports, all those kinds of things. So basically, any application that comes in, you could use the Bluegrass Area Development District to have them provide that professional planning service for you on it, to review any Platts, any plans, any zoning permits that come in, applications of that nature. They could prepare staff reports and attend our Planning Commission meetings, as well as our Board of Adjustment meetings in the interim while, while you are without a director. I, I think it could be good for you all. I think it's hard going without any, you know, planning expertise on, you know, on some of these applications that come in. So I, I spoke with them. They have the time and availability for it. They've sent over a contract. It'd be at a rate of eighty dollars an hour. So again, I, I kind of budgeted out twenty hours a week. I think that's probably generous, unless you want him to come in one day a week or something like that, to be in the office. But, you know, otherwise, I think if an application came in, and we'll kind of have to work through the specifics with Lisa and the BG add and myself. But I think we'd just be emailing him over the reviews, and then he could send back any comments, and we'd just kind of work through it. But my thought was that, you know, in this interim, we could get him to come in for a few days over the next few weeks. And I could work with him and try and get him up to speed on how we, we do things here. And, you know, you all can drop in and meet him if you want to talk with him about anything. But, yeah. I also put GIS services on there. I spoke with their GIS manager this morning. And I've been doing all the zoning map, kind of handling of our GIS right now. And so, you know, we won't have anyone on staff that can do that in the interim. So they said that they'd be willing to provide that. It, it would be two separate contracts. We had the BG add doing it for a while, until I came in and switched it out. And so, you know, the new director can, can decide if they want to take it back in house or keep the BG add. But I kind of told them it was open-ended, just depending on how that would go. But, yeah.
So just speaking for myself, I think that it would be wise if we had someone who had some routine presence at the, at the office. Doesn't have to be every day, but certainly someone who could provide us with an interim face for the, for the office. And, and so I would, I would prefer that someone came routinely into the office, rather than just being PRN, I guess.
I think that's a good idea.
I, I'll add that the contract shows that their hourly rate applies to travel time. I don't say that to discourage, but just so you know.
Yeah, you got to pay them, right? Now, we need to continue to take care of our customers, being able to serve our customers.
That's right. And it also puts Lisa in rather a lurch, because she will be asked to do a lot of things, being there in the office by herself. And I think. and I think we need to be able to have someone that she can rely on as well. So are you working with that individual then for a while? And, and can we establish a meeting with that person sometime in the very near future so that we can meet and talk to them?
Yep, I mean, we've got to have a contract in place with them. That way we can, you know, they can set up an invoice in their system and all that, so they can start billing us and we've got an agreement in place. But, yeah, if you all want to authorize Sally to sign that contract, Henry was going to take a look at it. They've still got to send over the GIS contract. I think that one's a little less pressing, because we have more time and they've done it previously for us, so it should be a pretty easy transition, but we need to have the, you know, Sally as the chair, sign it.
All right, so what you're asking for is a motion to approve the, the BGAD contract?
Um, yeah.
This is a point of, this is a point of clarification. I assume Sally then would also have the authority to either increase or decrease the hours of the, of BGADD person as we gain experience and see what we really need.
Yeah, I, this won't be a set hourly, you know, we're not paying them a flat rate of 20 hours a week. It's just going to be as we go. I mean, you can talk to Lyndon and the ad more about how, you know, how they envision it. They, because obviously, it's, it's based on his availability too, because he's got other contracts and projects going on, but, yeah. So I think there's more conversations to be had, but right now, I think it's just authorizing the contract so that we're, you know, we're basically agreeing to that hourly rate and then, you know, the amount of hours and the responsibilities and things, we can kind of meet with him and, I don't know.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
So I'll, I'll move to authorize contract to BGAD.
Mr.?
I have a second.
Can, can that be?
Thank you, Terry.
Can that be? That, can that be contingent on my sign off on the, I've looked at the planning services, it's fine. I just want to see the GIS one as well, so if you could make your motion contingent on Council's sign off.
Contingent on Henry's review contract.
Thank you.
Let's talk about it.
Thank you, Terry. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All right, do we need to approve the signing of the GIS?
I, I kind of thought those were lumped together, but.
Together?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The same requirements for both, yeah.
So are you saying you do or do not have, need a motion for that?
I, I don't think so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Everything was covered under that motion.
Okay, all right.
And we will review the con, both contracts.
All right, while we are all together, I would like to also talk about this meeting, this evening meeting that's being planned, that we expect a very large crowd to come to. That's coming up very quickly. I believe you'll still be here though, Michaela.
19th, right?
Yep, it's on March 19th, I will still be here.
One day.
I pretty much sent my last day to make sure I'd be there.
It's March 19, evening meeting at the Jenny Rogers for the flume review to the public.
And so my question that I asked the text when you were scheduling this is that, is this something that we should be doing with you being gone as quickly afterwards as, as you are? Should we wait for a new director to be here with this? I just, I'm just not sure, is all.
No, I think we definitely want to go ahead and do it while Michaela's still around. She has all the background and all the history she's done, between her and, and, can't think of the name of our city engineer now.
Josh.
Josh.
Josh, you know, they've been doing a lot of the thinking on it, so I, I don't think we want to lose that. I think there's a good chance that, that, you know, this, this will be probably the last meeting we will have to take the flume to the public, and so this will kind of wrap up the flume part of it.
I think it's already been advertised on the website, if we pulled it now, that might prove problematic for us.
And we talked about it yesterday, Sally, at the, the con plan committee meeting, and I think we were all in agreement in contention.
Okay, all right, well, I felt like it was useful to talk about that today, and if everyone feels confident about it, that we should go forward, then I'll, I'll reserve any concerns on that yet.
Well, I feel comfortable we should go ahead with it.
I think we need to go ahead with it, no matter.
Well, it's going to be almost starting over.
Well, we shall see how that goes then. Do we anticipate that that meeting is going to go smoothly? Are there people who are going to be in disagreement about it, or?
There's, there's no knowing, but, yeah, it's open to the public and we're basically just taking comments on the revised flume. I'm not asking for adoption of the flume at that meeting. I think you'll want to adopt the full comprehensive plan once it's completed, so it really just gives the commission an opportunity to hear all the comments from the public, compile what recommendations you want, and that's why I'm pretty much coming in on the 20th is to make any changes on the map that are discussed and.
And that input from the public is very important.
Yep.
Well, it's just the opportunity to say, here's what, we heard the round of the comments in the first round.
Yeah.
And we responded and made a certain set of changes, and the public gets to see that, and then, you know, we share from that if there's any additional comments. But I think that, that structure, to me, seems like it should address some of the issues.
Good. Okay, any other new business?
I don't have anything.
Have we heard anything from Jim? I got one text in response to the one I sent him, saying that he was improving, but still in hospital.
That's the last I've heard too, that he sent me that as well.
I haven't heard anything else from Laura or anything, so.
All right, okay, if we have no other new business, are we ready to adjourn then?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll circle.
All right, all those in favor, you can hit your leave the meeting button.
Thank you all.